Let me say good evening again and welcome. My name is Sylvia Bryant. I am the Vice President for Michigan Community Outreach at St. James Mercy Hospital here in Hornell. On behalf of my fellow presenters who are up on the stage who I'll introduce to you in just a moment, I want to welcome you to the December Town Meeting regarding the transformation of healthcare in Hornell. We have with us tonight members of St. James Mercy Hospital Boards of Directors, Foundation and Properties Boards of Directors. We have members of the New Vision Task Force. We have many St. James employees here. It's wonderful to see you. We have volunteers from the hospital. We have retirees. And of course, we have elected officials who've made the trip to be with us and we're pleased for that. And all of you, the members of the community. So thank you again very much for being with us this evening. As we gather together as a community during this Christmas season, I thought it might be appropriate to begin by reflecting on how far we have come in this journey to design a sustainable healthcare presence in our community. The three presenters here tonight, Jen Sullivan on my left, President and CEO of St. James Mercy, Kathy Perrinello on my far right, COO of Strong Memorial Hospital, and Jim Cummings, CEO of Oak Orchard Health, will talk about the plan for Hornell to retain almost all of the healthcare services offered in the community today. This effort has led to an unprecedented level of collaboration among regional healthcare partners, and you'll hear more about that tonight. We're eager to share our progress with you this evening, and we're not finished yet with the work we have begun, but we are getting closer to launching the new vision. And I choose that word "launch" for a very special reason. We know after months of reviewing data, collaborating with elected officials, and also our regional healthcare providers, and obtaining feedback from the New York State Department of Health, that our efforts are the next steps in the continued evolution of healthcare in Hornell. We will continue to evolve, and the result will be a stronger healthcare presence, not just for Hornell, but for the surrounding region as well. After the presentation this evening, we will have a question and answer session, and I would ask you, if you have a question to ask, that you please keep it brief so that everyone who wishes to ask a question will have an opportunity to do that. So now, ladies and gentlemen, let me present Jen Sullivan, President and CEO of St. James Mercy Hospital. Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Does this come out? Hello? So, well, thank you very much for coming this evening to hear about all the work we've been involved in. There's so much going on, I'm excited to give you an update, and I've prepared, as usual, a slide deck to help me through the presentation. As you can see on the first slide, we're looking at healthcare that starts up north and goes down the 390 corridor into the southern tier. We've listed Rochester, Dansville, Hornell, and Wellsville, as when you think about healthcare for a region, we're looking at an area much bigger than just Hornell. And of course, there's many healthcare providers looking to come here and help work with us on a sustainable future. The objectives for our meeting this evening are a few. We'd like to share the progress we've made since our last town hall meeting that was held in August. Outline the framework for healthcare services to be offered in Hornell. I know we had some dialogue about what we were talking about, what would the services be, and I know everyone's anxious to hear that. And so I'll tell you what those are, and to provide insight into the next steps. You know, it's always important, I think, to go back to why is the transformation necessary? And I think sometimes we get frustrated and we say, you know, "Why are we doing this? Why can't we maintain the status quo? Why do we have to change anything?" And I think when you go back, you know, you look and you say, "What has caused this situation in healthcare, not only here in the Hornell community, but in other rural communities across the country and across New York State?" We here have a very disproportionately high level of Medicaid, Medicare, and uninsured. That, of course, is our mission, to take care of everyone. When you have a lot of public funding for your revenue, it's a very difficult paramix to manage, where your cost of care exceeds the revenue you're bringing in. And so it largely is a financial issue, and I think we all know that is a problem here, but that's what's driving it. 66% of our inpatient care is publicly funded or uninsured. And so we knew we needed to do something, or else we would just simply go out of business, run out of cash, and be done. And it was our mission to make sure that this community sustained a very robust healthcare We have a very high fixed cost structure too, so that's why you've heard us talk about a new facility that's absolutely critical as part of our moving forward, so we can make sure that what we do going forward is financially viable and sustainable. We did look at renovating the building we're in today. It's not like we were all, you know, happy to leave the building. It comes with great legacy, and we just know that we can't sustain what we're doing in that building. It would cost an extra $2 million a year to continue operating out of that building. So these are some of the reasons why. Okay? Now, across the country, not only here in Hornell, and Kathy will be speaking to it more in a little bit, there is a declining demand for inpatient services. And the question is, "Why?" And the reason why is because there's better drugs, there's more done on an outpatient basis. We all know, if we've used the healthcare system, that the goal of the industry is to keep people out of the hospital, keep you well, keep you better, try to do things outpatient so you can have it done and go home. And there's less and less done in the walls of a hospital. At St. James, we have 119 licensed beds, and I think there's been many questions about that. You know, 112 of our beds, just to put this off the table, you know, 112 of our beds are skilled nursing facility. I'm not talking about those here, I'm talking about the acute care beds. We have 119 of them. The 112 beds at the nursing home, I very much so anticipate will stay as-is. We're selling the facility. We wanted to make sure that although there's a change in ownership, we find a good quality provider there, and that that service remains in the community. So although we're spending a lot of time this evening talking about ambulatory care and hospital-based services, I don't want to lose sight of the fact that another service that we have been able to sustain in this community is long-term care and also dialysis. I know I've gotten some feedback, it just feels like you're closing things and selling one thing at a time, but it was intentional. The intention was to transfer ownership, pass the baton, if you will, to another owner who can actually take each service and do a fantastic job with it here in this community going forward. In terms of the new vision update, collaborating with regional providers, we have been really, as Sylvia said, this is unprecedented. We're working with so many organizations to make sure we can put the pieces of this puzzle together to something that's sustainable and viable. For instance, Oak Orchard is here, Jim Cummings, and he'll be speaking about what he's doing. Basically, when he agreed to come to this community and try to help us, they work on different designations and work on different, you know, I guess, populations, so you can make a way to make the finances work. The hospital, St. James Mercy Hospital, cannot do what Oak Orchard can do and make it work financially. So when you think about putting a jigsaw puzzle together, you have to figure out who are the right players for each of the services that can do it well, keep the service here, and make the numbers work, so you don't run at a deficit. You know, as time goes on, you can't run a business with no money. It's just like your personal, you know, at home. You have to spend within your budget. So we have to spend within the revenue we're able to generate. And if our cost structure exceeds that, it just doesn't work. It's really that, that simple. We are working very closely with the New York State Department of Health to ensure everything we're doing is within the state's regulations. And that might sound easy, but it's really hard. It's not easy at all, and we're probably talking to them on a weekly basis at this point in time. And we really are dedicated to strengthening healthcare in the region, not only here in Hornell, but we're all struggling to survive, and all of us want to provide our communities healthcare. And no longer do we want to do it at the expense of each other. We all need core services, and we know if we work together, we can build a strong future for the entire region. What we have found is that there's a prevalence of chronic diseases that are leading the cause of illness, disability, and death, and rising health costs in New York State and Steuben County. So when you think of that, you need something, you know, that helps you manage chronic diseases. You need a piece of your puzzle that is addressing chronic disease management. The proportion of illness and death due to lung and breast cancer, respiratory diseases, diabetes, hypertension, and obesity-related diseases are higher in Steuben County than in New York State overall. So we look at these, what do our communities need? And then what we make sure is the services we're putting in the future addresses each one of them, because we know our communities need them. So we're going to show you a picture of a medical village. It's going to have an emergency department and a limited number of beds near the emergency department. So if you need an overnight stay for one night, two nights, you know, up to 48 hours, there will be beds. I know there's been questions, "Will there be any beds?", and yes, there will be beds near the emergency room. Also, a new facility is the foundation of the future of healthcare in Hornell. We need a new building. Transformation efforts have attracted new provider organizations, and it's interesting as each day goes on, as this project develops more and more momentum, there's more organizations willing and interested in coming to Hornell and work with us. Get on the bus, if you will, and say, "Wow, you know, this is pretty progressive. We want to be part of it." And it's been very exciting. And so, you know, what we say that we're providing today, I think, is going to be much more robust tomorrow, because there's all these new organizations coming to town and want to be in Hornell, working with us. Healthcare in Hornell will continue to evolve over the next few years, and we'll be providing those outpatient services that focus on preventative care and wellness. That is the pathway to us being healthier, to addressing those diseases and issues, healthcare issues we talked about earlier, very specific to our county. So this is probably a little difficult to read from where you're sitting, but what it is, is the Hornell Medical Village. It's a picture of two houses, and when I look at this, I kind of, it's two buildings. And on the left side is the skilled nursing facility, and in our nursing home, the services we provide, obviously, are skilled nursing. We do have short-term rehab, so if you had your knee replaced, for instance, you can rehab there. We have adult daycare and respite. We very much intend that those services will remain in the community under different ownership. The other building on the other side is the new building. And what we're looking at is multiple providers coming into that building and sharing the space, making that puzzle come together, but in a way that's financially viable and sustainable. And so when you see one bubble on one side, it says "Ambulatory Care Center", and you might say, "Well, what does that mean?" Those are the services that you have to provide under a hospital license. So you need to work with hospitals in order to provide those services. And each pie that you see in the circle there, those are the different services that we're planning to provide in that part of the building. So again, emergency department, it's very important. An emergency department in Hornell, with beds located near the emergency department. Ambulatory surgery and outpatient procedures. Urgent care, much like our express care today. Lab, radiology, physical therapy, and then specialty clinic space, which isn't all that different than we have today, where you have specialist physicians traveling to the community, and we'll be working on enhancing that. You know, maybe there'll be a cardiologist here on Monday, and orthopedics on Tuesday, or what have you, but where they can share space, and you'll actually be able to see the specialists you're looking to see here in Hornell. On the other side is Oak Orchard, and you know, Jim will be speaking to this in a moment, but Oak Orchard is the primary care, prevention, and wellness piece of this puzzle. And so they do not operate under hospital license. Their structure's a little different. They would be tackling the chronic disease management, primary care, family practice, internal medicine, pediatrics, all the prevention and wellness services. They're looking to bring dental back, which I know this community was sad when we lost that. We could not make it financially sustainable, they can. And to develop behavioral health as well. So as you can see from these houses, we have almost everything in them that we do today. And what we're doing is we're following a path of staying financially viable, sustainable, addressing what the community needs most of the time, and ensuring that we help our population get stronger and healthier. I'm going to hand the mic over to Kathy Perrinello to speak a little bit about the role of UR Medicine.
Thanks, Jen. Thanks for inviting me. I'm happy to be here. I actually was going to town hall meeting, I guess, in the summer, or
August.
Late summer. And got to meet many of you that night. When we and our team at Strong and the University of Rochester first formally met with the team from St. James, and it was board members and medical staff, as well as Jen and her administrative team, it was probably late spring, and they presented to us where they were proposing to go with the new vision plan. And I will, actually, the mayor was there too, and other community leaders, so it was a full representation of the community. And we were really impressed, our team was really impressed, to the degree to which this group had really analyzed all of the health trends and were dealing with issues that weren't of their making, were trends that were being faced all over the country, certainly throughout New York State, but also throughout the rest of the country, of declining inpatient hospitalizations, but increasing use of outpatient services. And they were dealing with their medical staff and with members of the community to address what would be needed in the way of healthcare for individuals in this community in a way that would reduce the financial losses that St. James was experiencing at the time. We were just impressed that it was a very thoughtful plan, a lot of due diligence, data and analysis had been done, and a lot of communication with the community had gone on about what they were doing. So we have been working with them throughout the summer months and early fall, in a number of ways. Our role has been to try to facilitate this transformation, providing some expertise in system transformation, because we have a little bit of experience with that. And ironically, Jim Cummings, who's here with us now with Oak Orchard, he was the CEO at Lakeside Hospital in Brockport up until just a couple of years ago. And Lakeside, in the far western part of Monroe County, found itself in a very similar situation to St. James a number of years ago. Same reasons, declining inpatient admissions, resulting in financial losses, inability to continue to provide care in their community. We had actually, and their situation was a bit different. They did not have an owner that was able to kind of softly, I guess, I will say, transition them into a new way of providing care. So they fairly precipitously had to close one April day in 2012. Jim, wasn't it? Yeah, or 2013, that's right. We were able to then, at that time, begin working with Jim, his team, and the community in designing, very much like what the St. James team, the Hornell team, had been developing for this community. The kind of sad story about that experience was that there wasn't the opportunity to do the planning that's being done in this community. So that community went for about six months without any services in that facility, until we were able to then bring up imaging, urgent care, a number of outpatient services that we thought were important, and then almost another year before we were able to actually reopen the off-campus ED. Since we've done that, we've had just enormously positive feedback from the community. They're able to use the emergency department and be observed overnight, if that's all they need. Then they're transferred in if they need to be admitted to the hospital, and about 10% of the patients that use the ED frequently need to be admitted. They're transferred into the hospital of their choice, often to Strong or Highland, sometimes to Unity and other hospitals as well. We work closely with EMS groups in our community, so that we have EMS ready at the door for any patient that comes to the off-campus ED and needs to be transported from there to another level of care. So we've been enjoying this experience of working with the Hornell team, because we think what they're trying to create in a very planned and thoughtful way is very much like moving together in kind of a rapid and less thoughtful in many respects way, because we had to do it so quickly, and we couldn't do it all at once. So we're really excited to continue working with this team. We're focused a lot with the team on developing the programs based on the data that they collected that are going to be important to residents of these communities. We've spent a lot of time working on business plans that will be sustainable. We've spent a lot of time going to Albany, and we've had members of the board and the mayor go to Albany with us as well, to talk with officials there, because we will need startup support from Albany. We will need state support for the building, the new building that Jen's described. We've gotten good signals that this plan that's being proposed is very consistent with the way New York State wants to see communities reorganize themselves to meet healthcare needs of its communities and its members. So we've gotten very good signals. We need, I think the Department of Health and the state is going to want to hear from many of you in terms of the importance of this plan to you. Again, it's consistent with all of the principles that they're trying to see emerge in communities throughout the region, but we really have been very actively advocating for their support to make it happen in Hornell. So we've spent a lot of time in that work. And finally, I guess I'll talk about DISRIP, the acronym coined for delivery system redesign incentive program. And this is a program that New York State is participating in. It's only the eighth state in the country that secured dollars from the federal government to actually redesign Medicaid services. And their intent is to use new monies coming from the federal government to do the kinds of things that are being planned in this community. Redesign healthcare services, focusing more time and energy on community-based services, outpatient services, that kind of thing, so that patients' need, or persons' need to be hospitalized are decreased. What we've been, and actually, Strong University of Rochester, and Rochester Regional Health System, which is the other big health system in Rochester, we are co-leading this delivery system redesign effort in the 12, 14 county region of the Finger Lakes. And so we've been actively in that role, working with the Hornell community around this initiative, because it is a perfect fit for this DISRIP program. We've been told by the officials of the Department of Health, this is a perfect fit with this delivery system redesign program. So our job is to make sure that we get the support from the department in terms of making this happen. But we feel really optimistic that we will get that, because there has been such thoughtful planning, and because it fits, again, with the goals and objectives of transforming care from predominantly inpatient to more outpatient and community-based. You know, it's interesting, the trends in the country, and many of you might know this, it is not certainly just Hornell that's seeing a decline in inpatient utilization. Statewide, nationwide, the rate of patients, persons being hospitalized has been dropping 1%, 2%, 5% a year. In recent years, it's continued to drop. It's projected to continue to decline. However, the rate of use of what's called observation days, which are basically short-stay inpatient cases, these are the kind of use that the beds would be used for in Hornell. Persons that need to be kept in, perhaps after an ED visit in the hospital overnight, up to a couple of nights for hydration, treatment, monitoring, will be able to say a facility that is outpatient in nature. And nationwide, we're seeing a huge increase in the utilization of those kinds of services, as well as other kinds of outpatient services. So we think this plan is really on track with what's happening nationally, and in fact, is the absolute right plan to be supported, to be sustainable over time, and to receive the funding it needs from public sources. So maybe I'll stop there and let Jim talk more specifically, and then we come back at the end to questions. All right, Jim.
Thanks. Thank you. Thank you very much. Happy to be here tonight. I appreciate the introduction to the community as we begin the plan to open a site here in Hornell. And I thought I would come tonight and be very brief, but give you an overview of Oak Orchard, who we are. We started over 40 years ago in Albion, New York, in 1973, with actually a grant from the University of Rochester to take care of agricultural workers in western New York. Since that time, we have expanded into Brockport, and then Lindenville just north of Albion. And lastly, in 2013, we opened a new site in Warsaw. So we now serve 16,000 patients across those four sites, and they come from all walks of life now. It is, in these rural communities, our primary care services really began to replace physicians' office practices as they retired, and new physicians didn't come to the smaller communities. So we are now a Level III patient-centered medical home in three of our four sites, and we will very soon be reviewed again, and we hope during that review that our Warsaw site will also receive that designation. And I think when Jen was talking about managed care and trying to manage chronic conditions and keep people healthier, that's a critical component of that, and its recognition from the National Center for Quality Assurance that we've achieved that level of care. We employ about 140 people right now. I'm happy to say at the moment, we're a financially stable organization, and you know, we're looking to support some limited growth, and Hornell does fit very well into our plan. One of the reasons that we're able to do what we do, and that's provide care for Medicaid population and for the uninsured and the underinsured, is because we do receive funding from HERSA, which is out of the Department of Health and Human Services, Health Resources and Services Administration. And they provide Oak Orchard and other organizations like ours, federally qualified health centers, with funding to make sure that care is provided across all socioeconomic groups. And so we have the advantage of that federal money every year that helps to support our I wanted to show you, just to give you some feel for our size and scope, this shows each of our locations, and we have 16 providers now in Brockport, six in Albion, we have two in Lindenville, very small community, four in Warsaw presently, and that practice is growing very rapidly. And we expect to get to a point where we might have five providers in Hornell. And that would include the dentists. You know, we do operate dentistry in Brockport and Warsaw, those two sites, but there is a need here in Hornell since the center closed, and we would look to be able to open that up and have it operating again. So this is just a summation of what we're looking at and planning for at Oak Orchard. Obviously, we did apply for a new grant funding to expand that funding I talked about earlier to the Hornell site. We applied in October for what they call a new access point, and we will hear about that grant hopefully in May. And that would also support the provision of care to the Medicaid population and the uninsured. We would hope to do primary care in the second quarter of 2015, and that would be how we would start up. Within a year, we would hope to reopen the dental practice. Pediatrics, right now, I'm a little unsure of. It certainly depends on our ability to have providers, but we would look to bring that to Hornell and think there may be a need for us to do that. And then in conjunction with the whole DISRIP effort, we're looking at integrating behavioral health services into the primary care offices, and we're working on a pilot project out in Orleans County right now in Albion with the Orleans County Mental Health Department. So we're working on a project to pioneer in that area and develop that integrated behavioral health service, and we would hope to bring that to Hornell at some later date. And I think, get this back to Jen, so thank you very much for having me tonight.
Thanks, Jim and Kathy. Thanks, Jim and Kathy. So, you wonder now, what are the next steps? And clearly, our next step is to submit an application to the New York State Department of Health to request funding for the transformation in the new facility. This is something we have worked on before. The program Kathy had talked about earlier, DISRIP, the Delivery System Reform Incentive Payment Program, is the program we're applying for the funding under. It's a New York State process and so, we need to follow the state process to request the funding. So, we are in the process of preparing that application in accordance with how it's been outlined by the state. When you look at the past, the present, and the future and what care can we receive at St. James today and in the future, I wanted to show a slide that showed today in the first column and you see all the Xs and tomorrow in our medical village, all the Xs. So, you can see that almost everything we do today is included in both columns. I didn't want you to leave thinking that our solution was very minimal and partial. It is very comprehensive and very much so focused on what this community needs most of the time. So, where can I go if I have a sore throat? You can go to your primary care physician, the urgent care center, or Oak Orchard. If you have chest pains, you would go to the closest emergency department. If you're near Hornell, you'd go to the Hornell Emergency Department. If you're somewhere else, you'd go to whichever one is closest to you. Dialysis needs, you'll go to the dialysis center that we anticipate will stay in Hornell, just under different ownership. OB-GYN needs, you'd go to your OB-GYN physician. Labor pains, you'd go to your obstetrician, the closest emergency department, or Noisy or Jones if delivery seems imminent. Where can I go if I have a stroke? Again, you would go to the closest emergency department. If the closest one to you is Hornell, you'd go to Hornell. If you have a toothache, you'd go to your current dentist, urgent care, or Oak Orchard. Unexplained pain, your primary care physician, urgent care, Oak Orchard, or again, the closest emergency department. So, the last slide before we move into Q and A, questions. I wanted to remind us about the legacy of compassion here in Hornell. And for almost 125 years, we've served the community with compassion and humility. The Sisters of Mercy brought a gracious, caring spirit to the community at the founding of St. James, one that remains today and will continue into the future. Many challenges remain in front of us. We are honored to be part of the rich history of St. James Mercy. We will continue to provide care to those most vulnerable and in need and we look forward to preserving the legacy of St. James Mercy in the new vision. And with that, I would like to open the floor for questions and I'll hand this over to Sylvia.
Which one? The other mic? Oh, thanks. Sean?
Thank you, Jen and the members of the diocese. First of all, I want to say I've been part of this process and it's been arduous and very difficult and painful. Jen, you and your team deserve much credit for your long hours and they're, our partners with the University of Rochester and Oak Orchard and the two institutions in the area, they are just, they're our partners. That being said, they did not create this crisis. This crisis wasn't created in the last nine months. This is a crisis that's been developing for some time. We hear a lot about payer mix. We hear a lot about, you know, diminishing inpatient care and diminishing the reimbursements. That's all true. That is all true, but we are just going to be sending our payer mix that's apparently so poor to other hospitals that aren't too far ahead of us as far as financial condition. So, I'm not too sure that it's the, you know, it is a B, L, C, or silver bullet to solve the problem. My question is, you know, when I've been on the St. James Board, I have, I've served the St. James Board and the board members for two decades. I started in 1991 and served until 1999. I left for two years and I came back at the invitation and I served from 2001 to 2009. I think around 2005 or '06, I was chairman of the Planning, Strategic Planning Committee. We were approached by the CEO of Catholic Health East, Bob Scannan, and he told me they had every intention to shop St. James Hospital. It wasn't part of their plans. And they tried to shop St. James Hospital. They didn't find any interested tertiary partners. They did find one in Guthrie. I wasn't, I left the boards. I don't know what happened with Guthrie or what went on or what didn't go on. But for the most part, in my mind, this is my opinion and I've been through all this process. A lot of this with St. James is a contrived crisis. It's a contrived crisis because their parent company, their parent organization, the C.H.E., you know, went out of business in July and merged with Trinity. They no longer want to run a local hospital. They haven't wanted to run St. James in years. And there's some members of the boards up there, if they're in the audience, when we passed the torch to Catholic Health East, and I say, listen, you're passing the keys to a different jailer. And when we, this institution becomes a drag anchor on this situation, it'll be cut. And unfortunately, my words were prophetic. When you have an institution with a CEO of Catholic Health East who's on the 990, a report they have to submit for non-profits to the IRS, who in her, the last posting that was official, her compensation package was over, close to $4 million. And we started experiencing losses in Hornell because of, once they started to shop the hospital, there was no effort, at least in my mind, I wasn't there, but there was no effort to plan for the future, to become, continue to be a viable organization that was planning for today's end. I'm sorry you have to say that. I will, I do support what's been proposed here. I will continue to fight for maternity services. Just thinking here, a community hospital that's 125 years old and a community of almost 9,000 people, a region of over 80,000 people, I think one of the childbearing age, oh, you know who lives in Hornell and is going to have a baby? Their child won't be born in Hornell, New York. Their child would be born in Wellsville. Their child would be born in Dansville. Two great communities, two great institutions, wonderful people that work there, one of the people that run them. This is not a criticism of them. Does that really make sense?
No.
So, when our city clerk starts to get packages from, they won't get any packages anymore, a daily visit from St. James with birth certificates. They won't. So, if you want to get a birth certificate in the future, you'll go to Dansville, Village Hall, or Wellsville Village Hall. So, those are some of the small things that in the big picture, no one thinks about. But I think about them every day as giving 20 years of my life to St. James, an institution that I love, and to see how it has been abandoned. You know, when we're experiencing losses of up to $6 million a year. You know, and the state just gave us $6.4 million, maybe more, I don't know, I'm not involved in the number crunching, but the state gave us $6.4 million to see us through this planning stage, that money ends in March. The reason for this tidiness of this is because of the short timeline is because the parent organization has indicated they don't want to incur any more losses after March of this year, of 2015. So, that's the issue. I mean, I thank Jen and I thank Kathy and I thank, you know, Jen and the other organizations involved in this process because we will have continuum of care here. But is it what we deserve? No.
No.
And we should demand better. And I'm not talking 119 beds and I'm talking 10, talking 15. You at least should have a community where you can have a baby.
Jen, thank you. To our partners, the University of Rochester, Kathy and Jim at Oak Orchard. I'm Tom Reed, as many of you know. And I wanted to come today. I came back from Washington, D.C., particularly tonight. I was in Washington this afternoon and I landed in Rochester and I can tell you, I came down Route 36 to this meeting tonight. I traveled the road that the mothers that are going to deliver these babies are going to have to travel in order to deliver their babies in the future under this proposal. That's a problem. And I got to tell you, I applaud the effort that you have put forward in this proposal. This is a solid proposal. I will grant you that. We are going through changes in healthcare across the country, in particular in rural communities like ourselves. We recognize that. But we're not done with this proposal. The inpatient need of this community, when you have a daily census in our local hospital of 10 people, when you're having parents that are going to be delivering their babies in this community, we need to address that component of this application. And as we have looked across the country, we also can't lose sight of the economic impact that this proposal represents to our community. No one tonight has talked about the loss of jobs. Better than that. And I recognize, I recognize that that pain is going to be real and it is going to occur with whatever proposal, the final proposal that comes with it. I just understand that. I know the numbers. I've looked at them. But as I have expressed personally, as I met with the president of the University of Rochester, Bill Sullivan, talked extensively with the CEO of Strong, Steve Goldstein, about this, we're not done with this proposal. And what we want to do is to partner with our partners, with our partners at the local level. To the mayor who's taken the lead on this, thank you. You have been at the meetings, you have been a loud voice, I know, in the rooms. We're going to stand together with our state partners, Phil Pomisano, Tom Omero, Bill Nojek, to continue to work with you to fine-tune this proposal. And by me being here tonight, I hope I have sent a message to this community that we are going to stand with you to make sure that this service is complete, these jobs are protected to the extent they can be protected, and we make sure we get the best out of this going forward. So, thank you and let's continue to work together to solve.
Sorry, I know a lot of you have questions, but I'm Phil Pomisano, one of the local settlements for our region, here on behalf of...
Mayor, I have Sarah Latton here, the senator is recovering from a recent minor surgery, but he's doing well. Someone in Joe Giglio and someone in Bill Nojek, his assistant, Mike Pomisano, my cousin is here. I will say, you heard from the mayor, you heard from the congressman, I just want all of you to know that we're all in this together and that we share that same thought. And we commend you for being here and trying, we know you didn't create this problem, you know we were trying to find a solution. And we're here to help you with that solution at the state level, the federal level, and the local level. And I will say, this is very personal to me. I was born and raised here. I was born here at St. James Hospital. My mom retired from St. James Hospital for 35 years. I worked at St. James Hospital. This community stands together and I know, I heard you say, let the Department of Health know what you feel. I hope the people in this room will show you how wide these services are. We know about providing the services that are needed here, especially on the outpatient business. We understand that things are changing across the board and it's going to more of an outpatient model. This plan is about regional collaboration and we applaud that. We know healthcare is changing, but with regional collaboration, we believe regional balance is needed and we, we are going to continue to advocate for a limited inpatient presence as the mayor and the congressman said. We are going to continue to advocate for maternity services because it's needed. We have a need here in this community. And as the mayor said, when you talked about that higher threshold of those who are Medicare and Medicaid, what that says to me is you have a high senior population and those who are most needed services to travel that far, whether you're going to Noisy, down to Dansville Hill in the middle of winter. And we're committed to working at the local level, the federal level, the state level, and with all of you. So, it is important to make sure your voices are heard and assure you, we will be delivering our content. We've already made our concerns known to the Department of Health. You know, I know the congressman, our mayor, city council, and we're going to continue to make our voices known through letters and through phone calls because it's important. This is a, this is an institution here and the people of the Hornell, greater Hornell area are deserving of equal services when it comes to that inpatient services as much as anyone else. And it could be a success if we just work together to try to make this happen. And I assure you, thank you all for being here and coming out and speaking and we're going to continue to work together. We want to work with you and we thank you for being a part of this solution. We know you're here to help and we just want to help you any way we can to make this work for all of us, to deliver the best quality care for the people of this region because they so much deserve it. So, thank you for allowing us to be here.
Most of you know me, I'm Dr. Stoner Murray. And I want to welcome Oak Orchard here. They have a small community focus, which Catholic Health East certainly did not, and new ownership is desperately needed. How many people here right now think that care, hospital care in Hornell has improved over the last 10 years? How many people don't? Well, I was, I was asked to leave St. James. I had, Sean has worked two decades. I have 27 years in at St. James as an attending physician and later as a hospitalist. I wrote a letter to the editor some five years ago. I wish I had been wrong. The newspaper published it and in that editorial, I said that St. James is committing slow harrakiri. I could see it. And I felt at that time, kind of like Winston Churchill must have felt in 1937 when he was warning of the danger of Germany and people wouldn't listen to him. Now, as far as chronic diseases go, people in Steuben County live longer than in most of the rest of the state. So, since we have more senior population, of course, we have more chronic disease. Things start to give out. We don't have people dying left and right of HIV, being shot on the streets. That doesn't happen here. Many people are here in this area on rural. Now, as far as the inpatient census, oh, our patients are going to the hospital, but they're not going to St. James. I worked as a hospitalist at both Wellsville and I spent 48 hours, which ended this morning, at Ira Davenport. I can see what those hospitals are doing. They are strengthening their inpatient staff. St. James found a way to... St. James found a way to, excuse my English, piss off almost all of its physicians. And, and they left. And the hospital's service area, the number of people coming to it has been progressively shrinking. People go to the hospital where their doctors recommend they go 99% of the time. So that the, the loss of the doctors was a huge nail in the coffin. Hornell is located. We have a vast area to the south here. As a matter of fact, I opened a clinic in Greenwood in 1976, which operated for almost 30 years. This facility, the, the, we need to reach out. We need to recapture the patients who once considered St. James their hospital. Community support, I, I hear a lot of it, and it's fading and it's gone. And I hope Oak Orchard can pull things together. Just before I go, is there anything else that I wanted to say? As Phil knows, and others know, I was chairman of the Steuben County Legislature for eight years, so I see it from the political side. But most of all, I see it from the inside of other hospitals, and we are being told that the same thing is happening in Wellsville, in Bath, in Danville. It's not. It's not happening. And why is it not happening there? Because those facilities have recruited physicians. Now, who would want to come to a facility in which the medical staff voted almost unanimously to fire the CEO?
This may be a dumb question, but I'm not familiar with facilities like Oak Orchard. Who staffs the primary care?
Who staffs it?
Yeah.
Primary care physicians that we have.
They're not local.
No, no. I mean, we're, we're not here yet, but we are talking to some of the physicians in this area to see if they have an interest in joining Oak Orchard. That would be our first call. A lot of good physicians in the community. We'd like to help them to stay here and be the providers that you're used to seeing. So if they decide to join us, then we would have them to start. And if, if that doesn't play out that way, then we will recruit physicians as we do in other communities, and we will staff that way.
I have the second part of that question. What are the hours at a facility like that, just break our business hours?
We, in most of our offices, we have one evening or two evenings a week that we're open. And in one of our offices up in the western New York area, we are open Saturday mornings as well. Here, Ron.
Hi, Doug Barnard, resident for about 23 years. Two questions, really. Will we still be, assuming that our primary care, our present primary care physicians are still here, will we still be able to go see them? We don't have to use Oak Orchard. Do we have a primary care physician already?
No, I mean, if they maintain a practice, we can see them, yes.
The second question, has Alston been included in any of the planning? My understanding is that they are planning on ramping up their contracts and their workforce.
I just wonder if they've been included in the planning process.
The answer is yes, and we're aware of that, and our HR departments are working together.
Thanks for coming tonight, everybody. I, Stoner, have a slightly different perspective of what happened to the hospital physicians. In 2005, many of us were realizing our, our method of practice from the office to the hospital, taking care of inpatients, was financially very inefficient. Medicare, Medicaid, and department insurances have never reimbursed inpatient care. Aren't you losing money? If you want to blame someone for why the old guard, those of us who did inpatient care for many years, left the hospital, it wasn't because we were angry with the hospital for most of us, it was because that model care did not work, and we realized the model care that did work. I have a huge eating machine at 9 Crosby Street. It's called my office. It consumes dollars, whether I'm there or whether I'm not. And those all about how dollars work. And the more time I would spend at the hospital, the more money I was losing. I was one of the people that led the charge. I informed the administration that as of, I think, January 1st, 2005, that I would no longer be providing inpatient services, that we would be restricting our practice to outpatient services. Now, I do other things at the hospitals as well, I was on the stress echo lab and that sort of thing. And the vast majority of the medical staff left at that point because they realized the national trend was that of a hospitalist system, not the system where you run back and forth from your office to the hospital. Now, a few of our very hardy physicians stayed in the previous model, and that's what they enjoy doing. It was not an anger, it wasn't the medical staff was, to paraphrase Dr. Rory, pissed off, we needed a better business model. I will tell you something. I, I told my patients, I prepped them for three or four months before I left. I told them it's going to do it. And they said, oh, no, no. And I said, listen, it's very simple. Either I do this, or I walk away from my career right now. My children grew up, I never went through their games, I never saw all those things. And when I resigned my inpatient privileges in 2005, my life improved 3,000%. My bottom line improved, but my life improved. Can you imagine having a job where you were on night call for 31 years? About every third or fourth night, you would be working at the hospital until 1:00 in the morning, admitting people were very, very ill. The phone rang all night long. You got up the next morning and did your normal day job of taking care of one patient after the other. When we walked away, that had a whole host of dynamics that have played out from that time until this. Here's what's happened. We had to hire a core group of hospitalists, and this is what's going across the country. This isn't unique to Hornell. The hospitalists are a special group of doctors, many of them internists, who do nothing but take care of hospital patients. Nine-one. Yes, very good, Stoner. Yes, Stoner changed gears and worked to the inpatient side of the equation. Now, that allows all of us to become much more productive, but when you're a man of my age and a lot of broken parts, and the phone rings at night, you never go back to sleep. Your body's awake, it's uncomfortable, and it was a huge improvement for those of us who went that way. We didn't leave because of anger. Now, here's, here's where I'm coming to. When you have a hospitalist system and you have an average census of 10 patients maybe right now, but in the summer it got down, I think to about seven, you have a fixed overhead, you've got to pay the hospital's competitive wage, or they, they're not going to keep coming. And the cost structure, it incredibly loses money. 63%, as Jen said, Medicaid patients paid 86 cents on the dollars. And no matter how many of them you had, the more you have, the more you lose. The Medicare pays 89 cents on the dollar, so again, you're losing money on each one of those. Now, I've, I've been part of the New Vision Task Force, and we showed Sean, we had a lot of early morning meetings and bagels and whatever, and what we learned was we're losing an incredible amount of money. Now, everything you said is true at Catholic Healthies and where we went, but given the model we have and the low population we serve with the inpatient system and hospitalists, we're losing incredible amount of money. Now, we left a limited number of inpatient beds in the system when we finished our work last March. We left OB in the system. But here's the problem. I want these things, you want these things, how you and I were both born in that hospital, Sean. These are all things we want. The problem is, the only way we can get them, if the state of New York, or the federal government, or some combination thereof, is willing to subsidize to keep these services in Hornell. Without that subsidy, I mean, these are things we want, but unless somebody's willing to pay them for them, how can we keep them? You know, I, I'm going to retire in this community. I want every service in this community we can have, but that's my spin on, if we're going to have this, someone has to pay for it. And a large number of physicians working for Southern Tier Health, they all quit.
Where are you planning on building this?
We're planning to build the facility over in that, in the vacant lot in front of the nursing home, although that's not a done deal. And the reason being is, we thought there could be a lot of efficiencies between the two organizations going forward, in particular if those in the nursing home need, need to go to the emergency room. It would be easier on them than driving them across town.
Well, my thought on that subject is, you're talking about floodwater.
Yes.
And you're talking about access. Highly opposite city in New York is going to give you another red light for access to your hospital. You're going to have to look for something on the existing connection with the Bridge 36 and put one avenue, so it's not enough. And that is something that can take literally years to get approval. It's something that should be started right now, if you're even considering building something, how much you're going to have to bring in.
I agree with you. And Stan, would you like to speak to this? We, we started that.
Yeah, I can speak, speak to that in terms of the space and the site location. And again, you're absolutely accurate, it's in a floodplain. Again, the, the design, we've been working with architects to look at the site plan, and at this point in time, we received assurances from everyone that's looked at what we want to build, number one, and where we want to place it, that that would not create a problem. The access that we're, that is there now for both Mercy Care campus on Bethesda Drive, that was designed to handle substantially more traffic than it's experiencing right now, even with the lows there. So, you know, we're, we're fairly certain right now that when you look at the overall site itself, that, that's one of the most desirable. And again, the way it was laid out originally for Mercy Care when they constructed the lows, that that access issues were resolved at that point in time. So I don't think that it would require a lot of additional approvals going forward for the plans.
I don't need the money. You said it cost you $2 million extra to keep the facility up every year. Is that using the entire set of buildings, or, I mean, why couldn't you cut off half of them? Sounds like your scaled-down model is not going to need much room.
I'm not, I'm not sure if Tom Valentine's here or not, but I know, I know I saw him earlier, so I'll put him on the spot a little bit. But the, the difficulty is, is the way the building evolved over time, at least the central portions of it. So when you look at the boilers and the heating systems and water and all the rest of that, it's a centralized system that services the entire campus. And so as new structures were built, it still revolves off of those same core services. So it's not like you can just look at one section and mothball it, where you can just shut it down and, and there's no more cost associated with that. You still need to use the same system, and, you know, unfortunately, there, there's some modest cost savings associated with it, but nothing that would be substantial.
Well, I, I find it difficult to believe that you can't use like a central portion of that whole facility, let's say, if the newest section, refit it with heating or HVAC, whatever you need, and, you know, cut off the other sections.
Sure. To your point, I mean, to your point exactly, we worked in conjunction with the University of Rochester's Facilities Group, who came in and studied the facility and what the proposed new use was for that facility. And, and it was a cost prohibitive scenario as opposed, as compared to building new.
So what's the expected expense of building new?
I think the total cost that we have on the building and mortar itself is about $30 million.
I think you can do a lot with HVAC with $30 million.
Well, no, again, I mean, everybody's, everybody's entitled to their opinion, but, you know, again, and I, I know you may be an expert in that particular area, but in, in much the same way, you know, I, I think, again, those that have been used to dealing with older facilities, and again, in terms of what the best future use is, and looking at the cost over the effective service life of the building, this, this, at least as we're being advised, is this is the, the best approach, and this is done by at least people that we believe have the right experience to be able to make those recommendations.
Well, yeah, I want to know what, as a community, we're a really good community, we all love each other here, we care about each other, what can we do to help move this forward, get the state and get the money to get this to come through?
I think the question was, what can the community do to ensure their voices are heard, to help, you know, secure the, the funding we would need going forward?
Well, actually, you're doing that now. Everyone has signed a petition supporting the continued existence of the hospital. You know, all the resolutions that are passed by local governments, all the letters that have been written. And, you know, I, I don't, I, I want to clear up something here, because I don't want people walking away from here thinking that the New York State Department of Health all of a sudden came to St. James and said, hey, you're not going to have any more inpatient beds. That's not the case. In this instance, the New York State Department of Health has been our friend. You know, they have about an $8 billion pool of money that they're in charge of through the district process. That money can be used for all kinds of different things. A lot of it can be used for infrastructure and working capital, which this project will be going for. And I don't want anyone here to leave thinking that they haven't heard our voices. They are hearing our voices. That's what we got to continue to do, to express our support. I know this, this, this project in my mind, this proposal, doesn't complete until we do have a limited number of inpatient beds, and also we have some maternity services. And we're not asking for the world. And if we regain, it's the portion of our lost statistics, and it's not to the detriment of any other institution that can be supported. So I, I differ with Spence when he says we, we, we need, we're always going to need support, and we're always going to get support of public dollars in the form of reimbursements or, or whatever, grants, and, and that's possible. I mean, that's how we've operated for years. Saint Francis of Assisi had a saying, obviously you said his was in Latin, I'm going to use mine in English. He says, "Start by doing what's necessary, then what's possible, and before you know it, you're doing the impossible." And we need a community of your voice, you need to stay united, and I'm not criticizing anybody, not criticizing anyone involved in this process. I'm disappointed, as I expressed earlier, in our parent organization, because like I say, this is a contrived crisis. But we can do it with the help of Oak Orchard's and Uvar, and, and Noiz, and Jones, and a little bit of faith in ourselves, in the community, we can do it. We can even do this. We're not asking for 119 licensed beds. We're asking for a limited inpatient presence. So if there isn't a need for an emergency surgery through the UR and there's going to be an extended stay, a couple, three days, or, you know, we want to great lengths to get University of Rochester general orthopedic people here. And that was a great thing, Jen, through your efforts. And they're not going to be able to do any joint replacements here, if there's not going to be a few inpatient beds. You know, so let's think about it. Let's use some common sense. I know, and I said it all before, and it's not meant to be a slam at anybody, but my old geometry teacher always said, "Figures lie and liars figure." You can't base all decisions on statistics. There's a human element.
I have just two quick questions. One is, let's say someone, you know, is going to give birth any moment now. Is there going to be nurses trained in the ER to actually take that on? I mean, just, you know, the transport itself, you know, if they're going to go at any time. That's one of my questions.
Okay. Any other?
And the other one is, since they have to be transported, if they're inpatient or anything to a different hospital, how much is that going to cost? Like, is that insurance, everybody's insurance going to pay? Or like, people don't even have insurance? How are they going to afford all that?
You know, not being a clinician, I tend to, when there's a question about clinical things, I ask Kathy or Kathy, I'm not sure if either of you would like to address maternity. I'm not sure how that's handled in Brockport. In terms of, you know, what is the skillset in the emergency room that could facilitate maternity, someone in labor that shows up in the ED?
Yeah. The experience in Brockport, and again, we don't advertise or promote, the freestanding ED is a place to go to deliver. So generally, all the women in the area plan to deliver in one of the hospital inpatient facilities. But I will say, in Brockport, emergency medicine physicians, nurse practitioner staff that organization 24/7. And in fact, they've delivered a baby in Brockport when someone stopped on the way, feeling they couldn't make it to the hospital that they were going to. Because emergency medicine physicians and nurses are trained in, you know, immediate response in a variety of areas, and certainly delivering the baby imminently. Because even in our hospitals today, when patients come in imminently, we've delivered in emergency rooms, et cetera. So there is capability to do that. But that's not what's recommended in terms of planning for delivery. But emergency medicine, EDs are capable of doing that in an urgent situation. And then, as I mentioned, and a lot to be done around this, but the kinds of things the Brockport community worked on were the relationships with the VMS so that there was transfer immediately to a facility when it was needed. So, Kathy, if you want to add to that in terms of the same thing.
I would add to that. I'm a clinician. Hello, everyone. I think most of you know me. I'm Izzy Muir. I'm also a doctor here, but everyone knows me from my childhood. To answer the question, yes, most clinicians can deliver a baby. That's the question is, who's going to take care of those babies when there's a problem? I mean, I know the Amos guys are great. But when you got a newborn, you need someone who really knows what they're doing. Those are the things that I fear are going to take place when we don't have the resources. With that said, we work on a baby for three hours. And I've talked to Sean about this. I mean, there's going to be some tragedies trying to get pregnant women to dance. With that said, talking about what Spence said, and I agree with Dr. Anavell about, you know, we're losing money. The question is, what about a smaller facility with the beds that Sean's saying, 15 beds? Okay, right now, we need $6 million a year. I can't imagine a smaller facility, right now, we have 500-plus employees. We have huge heating, cooling deficits. I mean, the money we lose on heating that hospital every winter is enormous. The money to air conditioning is enormous. The money to, for all the different offices and executives and different staff and whatnot. I mean, of course, some people will lose their jobs, but it won't be 500-plus people with a smaller, compact facility. And I can't imagine that the deficit would be $6 million a year in a small hospital that can really serve the needs, you know? That's one question. The other one is, a lot of this is assumptions, that Oak Orchard gets the funding. They find the doctors, they find the dentists. What's the plan if they don't? And what's that going to?
Thanks, Izzy. I think that's something, again, that we can do to help ensure they do get the providers and the support of the community. Because really, you know, the whole cold reality, hard cold reality, is that without this proposal going forward, we would be left with nothing. We are out of cash. We found a financially viable and sustainable solution. And so we need to, as a community, make this work. And so we need to do everything we can to make it work, or else we will be left with nothing. And it is a scary thought, but it's the truth. In terms of what Dr. Muir said about the loss, you're right. In a smaller, as we looked at the financial projections, it's very difficult to even break even with the proposal we have. And in our payer mix, having a lot of Medicare, Medicaid, and uninsured makes it very difficult to make the numbers work. It's just the way it is. But when you look at adding inpatient, there's two challenges from a financial perspective. Is one is the loss would continue. It would begin around $1 million a year and continue to grow as the federal and state budget deficits come with reimbursement cuts. It's, we have the projections, it's not a secret. And also, if we need a new facility to make this work, which we do, to achieve the efficiencies, there is district money, the $8 billion that's coming into the state to transform the system. That money is not for status quo. And so our entire building, the whole risk right here would be that we won't get any money to build the building if we try to maintain the status quo. We need to transform the way the state is reforming healthcare so that the numbers in the future do work. And so it's not a matter of saying, well, just add a little bit more to the building, add a little bit more of a loss, and find someone to pay for those differences. It basically puts the whole project at risk. And so just to understand that, it's not something that I'm sitting here saying I don't want inpatient. That's certainly not the case. But the numbers simply don't work. And right now, there's no one that can fund the deficit and no one that'll pay for the building, because we need to get these funds to make this work. So I think we've done a tremendous job to try to take a situation that was in a downward spiral of actually losing everything and make the impossible possible, using Sean's words. It's been incredibly difficult. We're working as hard as we can, and we're trying to maintain everything we can here for you. And I do agree with Dr. Muir. There will be less of a workforce in the future, although we're working day and night to try to find ways to transform employment from one to another and help our employees transition. And each day, we're chipping away at that number and getting it down lower by the day. So we have all our employees in mind. We're working very hard, and I promise we'll continue to do the best we can.
I'm Dr. Byron Collins. I've practiced surgery here for 50 years. And although I'm not a native of this community, I'm actually far from there. I came from Allegheny, New York. And I guess I feel like a native at this point. I can't remember when I wasn't a native. Just a couple of things about, that I'd like to clear up. Oak Orchard, my understanding was that, don't you need a grant in order to come to Hornell?
Yes.
Are you able to get that grant?
I won't know until May.
What are the chances? I quite heard that there are several hundred people looking for this same amount of money. And there's just one or two people looking for it.
That is true.
So the Oak Orchard thing is really pretty highly, at least questionable at this point in time. Do you think?
I think, yes, there's some truth to that statement. I think we're evaluating. There is some truth to the fact that the, in order for us to provide services across the spectrum of insured and uninsured people, the grant is certainly very necessary. We are evaluating, though, that again, if we can come to Hornell and have patients rather than start from scratch and build a practice like you might in some communities, if there were patients to come to us and providers to come to us, and we're looking at the numbers to see if we could come without that grant. It would be difficult, and I grant you, that may be a low percentage that we could do that, but we're evaluating it.
I appreciate your candor. I just thought we got to clear that point up. I look at us, our community hospital, St. James, whatever we call it, as having a strong responsibility to take care of the people in the Southern Tier. These are people who, many of them are older, as Stoner said, they are retired. Some of them, many of them are living on limited incomes. It's not practical for these people to have to travel to other places to get care, whether it's, I think Wellsville is a very, very difficult place to get to under any set of circumstances. I'm not even sure I can find one. Danville Hill is a horrible place. Hornell is a non-located, it's the biggest town. And it's a logical place to take care of this 80,000 people that we're talking about in the Southern Tier. The, from a surgical perspective, let's go back even to a medical perspective. I know what's going to happen. One of the things that's going to happen is that many people are going to go without care just because they can't get any place else. And that's going to be a real, that may be the real tragedy. The second thing is that, from a surgical standpoint, and nobody's really mentioned this, but the, we've really had kind of a proud surgical heritage in Hornell, going all the way back to the days of O.K. Stewart. I followed him. That was about 100 years ago. We've always had good surgical services. The other hospitals always referred to us. When I came here, we had over 200 hospital beds. Those beds being at, Bethesda being at St. James, over 100 at each place. We were full all the time. And then things gradually started to dissolve. And I understand that medicine's changing. And I understand that we have to change with it. But I think that we should be the focal point of this change. If we get, if this plan goes through as it's proposed right now, there would be two surgical beds in Hornell, or two surgical operating suites in Hornell. One would be used for scopes. The other one would be the bed or the operating suite that would be used for so-called surgeries. Now, if you didn't have any medical people in the hospital, it's impossible to run a surgical service of any kind without having a hospitalist or medical people in the hospital. So think about this. Your child gets an appendicitis, you have an acute gallbladder attack, and not the, we're not talking anymore about lungs and the organiasms. But bread and butter, medical or surgical services that have to be carried out and should be carried out in this hospital, in this community. And we should be able to do this for our people. We won't be able to. Allo Joan Rivers was what happened there, a simple endoscopy, and she was buried. Now, you can't anticipate, nor can you predict, who is going to have a problem with a surgical procedure. All about, all by how simple it is, all by how complicated it is. Nobody knows. And in today's world of malpractice, you have to be undermined to do any type of surgery with anesthesia without having any backup in the hospital. What are you going to bring up with? You're going to have, I can tell you right now, somebody who will do lumps and bumps, and that'll be it. The local anesthesia probably, you won't be able to find a good anesthesia surgeon. If they're mentally ill, they won't find it. And what surgeon that has to train for 14, 15 years to start to plan the tonsil repair where they are unable to, oh, sorry, they're just not going to do that. Anesthesia is the same way. Remember the anesthesia? Now, it's the same, they can't practice their craft. So surgery is going to be dead. And I think that's a real tragedy. We need that badly in this community. We need the whole perspective badly. I think we should really all fight. I don't know how we're going to finance this. I agree with a lot of the things that have been said before, that it makes no sense at all, that we should be losing $6 million per year, whatever it is. I know where a lot of this money has gone, so does everybody else that knows that's going into that. There've been a lot of bad decisions made. $2 or $3 million on a cycling, on the third tour that was open for less than a year. And it doesn't take long with things like this to build a horrendous debt. I do believe that if we all pull together, and everybody gets involved, and we get the help of our politicians and so on, from Washington, from Auburn, that somehow we can find a way to still have a basic hospital. The one thing I think you all need to know, you talk about 10 patients in the hospital a bed, but you know, people in this community are afraid. I get this in my office every single day. They come in and they say, you know, is it safe to go to St. James? Should I have my surgery here? Should I have my, can I even go in for my medical things here? Is it a good place to go? And what's happening is that every single day, we're cutting a service, one service, another service, they get newspaper stuff. And the nurses are leaving, one at a time. We've lost many, many of our good nurses. And of course, you can't recruit. I mean, how does Wellsville recruit? How does Danville recruit? They recruit because they're offering something, and because they have a complete hospital. You can't recruit with a partial hospital. You can't recruit good people who are going to come here when there's nothing in the future they can see except the hospital closing. So I think we really all need to get involved in the community. We don't have a lot of time, but we've got to get involved. We've got to really support this thing hard and do the best we can. I think Jen says nothing against your efforts. I think they've done a tremendous job. You inherited it.
No, ma'am.
Is admirable. But I think we can all work together. And I think our vision is not, should not be to have outpatient facility, an emergency room, this sort of thing. I don't even think that would survive. I really don't. I think that would be gone over the years. Why would you bring your family to an emergency room in Hornell if you knew if you were sick, had to be hospitalized, or had anything serious going on at all, that you had to go to Wellsville, Danville, Danville, to Rochester, et cetera? I don't think it would work. So again, my plea would be for not to give up at this point in time, for everybody to work together, to work hard together, and see if we can possibly hold this thing off, maintain a basic hospital here that can take care of all the patients that we're there to care of. Thank you.
I've been associated with St. James Hospital in many ways for many years. And I understand Dr. Hori's concerns, and I also understand what Dr. Collins is saying about his patients being concerned about, about St. James being a safe place. But I can only speak from my own experience. And that is that it has been, over the years, the most wonderful hospital. I had three of my children there. I've been there as a patient myself. I taught at Alfred University in nursing, and I took my students there for many, many years. And just in recent times, my husband has gone through the emergency room and had an absolute perfect experience for somebody who was sick. So I don't know what the concern... And so I, I don't know what the concern is about it not being a good hospital. I, I hope that something will come of the plans that have been made. I realize that we all need everything, and we all want everything, but maybe that will not be possible. I come from Alfred, and I have to drive 12 miles to get to the hospital anyway. And I know a lot of people in the area live a long way from Hornell. So not having everything right here may not be the way to go. So I hope that, whatever the compromise is, that it will work.
Hi, um, my name is Shelley, and I've lived in the general vicinity my whole life. I also have had amazing experiences at St. James. I wanted to go back to the question of how can we help, and we all need to help, and we all need to get together. And first, I'd like to thank Mayor Hogan, John Buckley, and Mike Pomisano, who spent hours and hours and hours last week and a half getting out just yard signs. I want to remind people that we can write letters, we can, we can send letters to Mr. Reed, Congressman Reed, and he can take them with him. He can have stacks of them. Many of you, many of you have stories here of, of the past, the history, the quotes, the sayings, but do you have those conversations every day about why the hospital is important? What do you need from the hospital? Have you sent a letter, an email, a phone call? That's what we need to do to help. Jen, God bless you, you took on a, a mountain, and you're, and you're working towards it. And there's 500 employees that are also trying to get towards the same goal. But there's 80,000 of us in the region, so how many letters and emails and phone calls will it take to Trinity or to the Department of Health to help us find that money? Anything's possible if we all come together like they said. So the ways that you do that is you call, you email, you send letters, you write letters in the regular mail, it doesn't have to be email. But we can all help, and, and we can continue to have those stories about how great our experiences are, and we can change what happens here. We can dream in Hornell, and, but we all got to do it together. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I think some of you guys know me. My name is Luthma Mayer, and I'm a local pediatrician here, and better known as Izzy's wife. But I didn't grow up in Hornell, and I didn't know the area even existed until I met him. I grew up near Manhattan, so I'm a city girl, and coming to Hornell was a big culture shock for me. So shortly after we came, you know, we found jobs here, and we were welcomed into the community, and I felt like it's been home ever since. I have two things to say to you guys, primarily for Oak Orchard. We have a huge number of patients that need a seamless transition to primary care once the doors close. And you really have to be diligent and on the ball about it. I understand that now the date's been pushed to May, and the doors close April 1st, or a little bit before then. So we do have a gap, and you have to do everything possible to bridge it so that we don't have patients without care. The second thing is for the leadership in Rochester. I'm not a first person, but I've been paying attention for the last couple of years, and I do sit in on the perinatology meetings. Strong comes to the, to Hornell, and we go over all our numbers. Steben County, Hornell Hospital, St. James, has about 300-plus deliveries a year. Danville has 300-plus deliveries a year. Jones has 300-plus deliveries a year. We have as many as Danville and Wellsville. Now, if most of the people are going to go to Danville, they're not big enough to take on this 300 in plus of pregnant women and sick babies. You never know when that baby's going to be delivered, if they're going to be well or sick until they're delivered. So are they prepared to handle that? And are you having a son about that? And if so, you, you do need to understand that keeping maternity services here are just as important to the community as it is to the babies being delivered. They deserve to have that care, that chance, those minutes of survival that people in Danville get and people in Wellsville get.
I think I'd like to add a little clarification, because I'd hate everyone to, to leave the meeting thinking the doors are closing on April 1st. And certainly, we do run out of IAAF funding at the end of March. So whether the transformation to the new vision will happen on April 1st, May 1st, June 1st, I don't know. I mean, I, I highly doubt everything will just stop, drop dead on a date like that. We're working very closely on an advocacy front, we're working closely with the Department of Health, and closely with Trinity. Now, you can't just close a hospital without approval, and so I want you to be clear that as part of this, what we're trying to do is maintain and preserve as many services as we can. So I would hate for you to leave this room thinking we're closing the door on March 31st and everything just goes away. What you will probably see, if the transition happens on April 1st, I call the transition passing the baton to different owners. You will see us operating out of the, the building we're in today. It will take a year or two to build a new building. You'll see a lot where it is today. And so, you know, I, I just want to make sure you have that clear. That being said, I, I understand Dr. Mayer's concerns about pediatrics. Yes?
Jen, one question. Does this, do this closure, when submitted, do you age?
No.
And that's one of the things that...
Our first meeting with the Health Department as a group was, the Health Department was Strong and Catholic Health East, and Pete, myself, October 3rd. When I returned, one of the first questions, I, I emailed Dan Shepard, who was the Health Department, the facilities bureau, and I said, it appears that this community could be placed in a position of having no healthcare provider organizations if the hospital's allowed to go dark on March 31st, 2015. Is there the potential for that to happen? I got a resounding no from the Health Department. They're not going to approve any hospital closure plan until there's a plan in place. So go to bed tonight knowing that you'll have a hospital until this thing's sorted out.
Well, thank you for attending tonight. I appreciate it, and I look forward to talking to you at the next, oh...
I think I have one clarification.
Yes.
And I'm, I'm the mayor's wife, and I should probably, I probably get it when I get home, but I want to know what's... Could you go back a couple of slides? And Jim, is it Jim? Can you please just clarify your hours again?
I don't know. I don't know if I had a slide on it.
I know, but you have all the places where you're located. Can you go back to that? Uh, yes.
No, one more.
And just, no, no, that one's good. So you're in Brockport, you're in Albion, Lindenville, Warsaw, and a proposal to come to Hornell. And you, you said your hours are what again?
They are generally eight to five, as most practices would be. And then we do have two evenings a week, and one in the Albion location, one in Brockport. We're open from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that's what you said.
Yeah.
Is there, in the future, is that the way it is in Brockport? All those places, that's the way it is? Those others?
Yes, yes.
In the future, would you ever be a 24/7 facility?
No.
Okay. That's all it needs to know. Thank you.
Also, in the ambulatory care center circle, in addition to the emergency room, we had urgent care. And, and so you may, you may see that in another place, but not with, with Oak Orchard, so...
Are you saying you may see that?
You could, in addition to the ED, because sometimes you have enough volumes that you need both, and patients would rather go to urgent care versus the emergency room because of the co-pay, and it's not an emergency, but they want access after hours. So you may see all of it. You may see emergency, urgent care, and Oak Orchard.
But are you, are you, are you applying for the district in that, with that vision in mind?
We, we are applying for district with all three services in it, yes. Okay. Thank you very much, and look forward to seeing you at the next town for me later.